Girl who's from Chaska? Did the...
Did she have to go to the Appalachian?
Oh, Carol.
Movie with Reese.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I've seen the movie, but then I just picked up the book.
She's from Chaska?
She lived for a few years.
From Chaska.
The person that I just...
No, no, there's a, the movie, what was the movie called?
Wild.
There we go.
It was made about...
I picture the hiking boot.
Yeah.
Really?
There was, um...
The book good?
No.
Um, I'm... Oh, this is... Okay, yeah, I, I love the movie. Don't bother finishing it.
And I so far like the book.
Don't bother opening it.
Well, many book though. Okay, I heard an interview from the woman who set the record for how long it took to do the entire Appalachian Trail. Um, and she was like, "Yeah, I mean, I spent most of my time hallucinating, but at least it kept me company." And I was like, "That doesn't sound like fun to me."
But she's an ultra marathoner, so she'd run like fifty miles a day. And that's why she did it so fast.
She's like, "My best..."
Was she hallucinating from something? She was taking her just like wax box and exhaustion?
It's just exhaustion and dehydration and not enough calories and... All that good stuff? I would say it's just trying all...
All the things that happen when you run fifty miles a day.
Think of a horse. That's what my grandpa always used to say.
Think of a horse?
When, uh, I was gonna sneeze and I was trying to fight it off, he'd say, "Think of a horse."
Bye.
I saw that. Okay.
Oh, it is five thirty, thank goodness. Um, we are good to go. I will call this work session from May fifth to order. First up, we've got the city manager's report, Mr. Merritt.
Can I get the... Oh. Okay, can we... Right, good evening, Mayor and Council. So, just a few updates. Uh, wanted to remind you about the listening session that's, uh, gonna be on June second. Uh, we're starting to, we did a boost of a post that we did on Facebook. And we actually got, uh, two additional, uh, email submissions today on it. So, hoping that, that combination of that and, uh, the other, uh, social media postings, the second newsletter, we start to generate, uh, some interest.
What does it cost us to do a boost? Because I saw that, I noticed.
Seventy-five bucks for a week.
Okay, that's how long it lasts?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
No, that's a good question.
That's actually, well, it was effective. I noticed her right away.
Yeah. Um, I think one of the other things, and just kind of like setting the table for this, so if you have feedback or want to pivot out of this, but I, one of the things I really liked about the listening session for the council is, we don't really have to have answers on the second. So, you can listen. And part of the strategy will be to take the questions that we know that we haven't done maybe a good enough job answering and creating a follow-up. So, um, we've done it on different construction projects, what we've heard, uh, and then, you know, the response so that people can kind of follow along. And I think it, hopefully it creates a space where people feel and experience that we're learning and, um, evolving our process, uh, as they contribute. And they can see that in real time rather than, uh, having them say something and then giving them an immediate response, like everything's prepared or, I think, all of you have heard, like, "This seems like a done deal." And so, the more that we can, uh, mitigate that, the better off we are. Uh, and then I asked Andrew, there's a, uh, utilities project happening in Lions Park at Wells. One and three, they're co-located, that involves some tree removal. I just asked Andrew to speak to that.
Yeah, so there's some old trees, there's kind of that hill that's right behind the wellhouse in that storage building. There's a lot of trees on that hillside that are in rough shape. Um, so, before they fall down on our well during a storm, we're gonna get them out of there, uh, in the next couple of weeks. So, we can kind of mitigate that risk a little bit. But that just, as we were out there, kind of kicking off the project, we kind of noticed those trees and said, "We should get those out of there before they cause a problem," so...
Andrew, is it just the trees in that box? Is it all the trees on...
Just really in that box. I mean, you could get carried away, because that whole hillside, um, is really steep. But then if there's nothing there holding that soil in place, then we start to lose soil. So, just trying to get the trees that are directly above the wellhouse, that's kind of most important for me right now.
Yeah. Are you gonna take the whole stump out there or are you gonna leave that for stability reasons?
Uh, maybe the stump stays. It's, they're kind of tough on that hill to get out even, so...
Well, it's not like it's a really usable space, so if they stay, it's not really a...
Yeah, as long as they don't fall down the well, I think we're good.
Yeah.
Uh, then a reminder, we've got a couple, uh, notices in newsletter called Spring Cleanup Day is May seventeenth. And then, uh, City Hall Summer Hours start Tuesday, May twentieth seventh. So, that's the Tuesday after Labor Day. Uh, Public Services is on that calendar year-round. Uh, so it'll be just office staff at City Hall. Uh, but we have a variety of ways that people can still engage. And for the salaried folks, we still maintain, uh, availability throughout the day on that Friday through our, end of our normal business day, uh, as needed. So, uh, happy to answer any questions on updates that I didn't provide that you're looking to get an update on.
Um, just on the summer hours, I have zero expectation of you being, or anyone else's salary being available after eleven AM on Friday, when you come in at seven AM.
I don't come in at seven.
I don't either.
All right, I just, I just wanted to like, you know, okay. Now that we've got that out in the open, okay. Uh, okay. Um, the other thing is, I just think that we should kind of set up, I've got a couple, I've received a couple of emails from residents on the, uh, public services space study. And I'm gonna forward those to Brent, to forward to you guys. But I think we should be doing the same if we're all agreeable on that, just so that we're all kind of working on all of the information that's been sent in and that I think you'll...
Oh, if we give anything forward to Brent?
Yeah, so that he can share it with us and that he can kind of create this stack pile of feedback just so that we have it all kind of in, in one place.
And I, my intention is to read those comments. Uh, I think often it's the people in the room that have maybe the most impact and want to make sure that we're valuing the folks that maybe can't make it for whatever reason, that their voice is kind of out and everyone can, um, digest it at the same rate, so...
Yeah, sounds great, and I love hearing you read emoticons.
Lesson learned.
Maybe they'll just go in the back. Um, okay, nothing else, Brent? Okay, any constant requests?
I have one. Um, I know I mentioned this a little while ago, but when you leave town here and you're heading out toward sixty-one, on Carver Creek, forty-one, um, there's some huge potholes that have started. And there's some now that are in the dry lane of traffic. And with weather that's nice, if we have motorcycles going and one of them hits that, very easily...
We approved that project, they're allowed.
Okay, but are we going, oh, to, but to patch those holes?
To do a complete mill hole, really.
Uh, okay, but when is that gonna start?
Don't know, good question. So, that, we reached out to the contractor to try to get schedules, we're still waiting on them. So, we'll can take a look at those potholes if there's any immediate...
Yeah, I mean, there's a couple, like, that are in the dry lane and that people aren't, I'm just afraid that somebody on a motorcycle especially is gonna hit that. So, if there's even looks that temporary little bit of patching, we can do right there.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
I have a comment update. I haven't had a chance to connect with Brent, but he already knows I have, I can't stay for the seven o'clock meeting. But he may have already communicated that.
Uh, no.
Yeah, I have a hosting something at my house that got rescheduled. It should have been last Monday, but with the storms, it got rescheduled, so... Yes, hosting a pasta dinner and also making crafts.
Great, we'll be over after the meeting. You think your kids will see that?
Yeah, we'll be up.
Julia Merritt is gonna be there, so she's got the expectations.
That's a pasta in Chapel Hill, it's for our lacrosse team.
Wow.
I was gonna say, that sounds like a pasta beat to me.
Yep.
Okay, save pasta for us. Um, okay, um, any other requests? Moving along to the draft of Creekside Dog Park rules, Ms. Smith.
Can I have a cord, please?
Thank you. Kids, please. Oh, you really can't see, it's a complete surprise?
Yeah, that's a total surprise. Okay, thank you, Mayor and Council. On March seventeenth, we talked about dog park rules. We reviewed some, uh, rules from adjacent communities, adjacent dog parks. And the council gave guidance to staff to be consistent with Carver County's rules. So, that's what's in the packet now with one, um, change since it went in the packet, because we don't license pets. So, removing that, but otherwise consistent with Carver County's rules. We talked a little bit about codification at the previous meeting. I, um, taking a look at our city code, we cover several of the areas that I think would be important. So, uh, six dash thirty-five is cleaning up litter, which is, um, dog poop. So, you have to clean up dog poop. Um, obligation to prevent nuisances, which I think several of the other items in the list could be considered a nuisance. And then having a leash requirement coming into the dog park. So, we have some of them. I know that we felt kind of strongly about cleaning up after your pet, so it's already in our ordinance. If we feel strongly about all of them, we could codify all of them. But looking for some feedback from the council about what the path forward is.
We're gonna have dog waste pre- station, so...
Yeah.
Kind of that, might only edit. And I, I find with the existing codification and the change that you highlighted, but I wonder if we should move number six to be number one, clean up after your pet? Because for me, that feels like what dog parks get in trouble for and what the ones at, I forget which ones are in Victoria, the counties, but they threaten to close because it's been such a mess.
Yeah, I'm gonna wash the house, too.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
We should make that, yeah, I think that's number one, just because the rest are kind of no particular order. But if you're only rating one, that's the one I want you to see.
Anything else that's kind of common sense if you use dog parks?
I would argue that clean...
I know that is also, but yes, I know what you mean. Okay, any other thoughts? People are excited about this.
Same. I like the simplicity of this. Um, it covers what we talked about in the previous meeting without being overly wordy.
Yeah, agreed.
I'd say like it's consistent with the county, so, perfect.
That might have been the fastest work session I done.
That area has ever had, ever, ever.
Nobody really wants to dig into this? Um, okay, up next is the strategic plan revised draft action plan.
I'm sorry, this cord passing is annoying. We should have sat closer together.
Just thinking, when we toured before we built this building, we had a lot, had lessons learned, lesson learned. Those are twenty-two.
Guess I'll have horns.
Thanks for that, Brent. I'm gonna do some spring cleaning.
All right, so, this is a action plan that, uh, our leadership team and I worked on, uh, that we wanted to present to the council. So, I would call this a working draft. We like, obviously, the things that are in here, but, uh, the city council's a very integral part of this process. So, if there are, are things that you don't like or you want wordsmith around, we're more than willing and able to do that. I'm gonna run through the whole plan so that you can see it as a package because we're, well, how we're seeing this is an amendment or an integration of, of the conversation that you had about a, a month ago into the existing plan. So, initiative number one is enhance financial strength, uh, reduce reliance on debt, stable consistent rates and demonstrated financial strength. Uh, so here you can see the kind of existing increasing cash for capital by ten percent annually, three percent maximum, uh, rechange. You can see our, our data on those. We kind of reformatted our action steps. So, strategy to increase bond rating, we added targets. We didn't previously have those, so that's a fall of twenty-five. So, Lynn and I will be working on that this summer. Uh, to develop the comprehensive tenure financial plan that's been completed. And we'll be working on an update with the council, um, in the next month or so. Then we'll be doing the kickoff for that. And then the create financial scorecard with Peer City Cohort. Uh, here you can see the template for that. We added the franchise fees, wanted, um, as something that the council had asked for at a previous meeting. So, getting into the, uh, initiatives amendment, so, a couple of areas here. We focus asset and financial planning and policies based on alignment, future needs and established fiscal objectives. And then also ongoing consideration for strategic partnerships, cooperative arrangements for services. Uh, examples include information technology, recreation, public safety, transportation, Southwest Prime, et cetera. So, as you might remember from the last work session, that'll, the, the last transportation piece is something that Aaron Smith is working on with Met Transit and Southwest Transit. So, that should be something that will be coming up. Uh, here are our, our action steps, so something that you, that are, are new for you to take a look at. So, uh, refresh and recalculate all cost estimates in the twenty-twenty-five tenure plan update. So, that'd be something that we all kind of have a hand in. I think there's that balance between making sure it's conservative enough, but also not kind of blowing it up and saying, "Well, as long as we put it at fifty million, if it comes in at thirty million, we should be okay." We want them to be reasonable, uh, so we want to go through an exercise for that. Uh, develop some additional financial targets within the tenure plan for the city council to consider. So, whether it's something that you have in the back of your mind, Lynn and I would also be looking at other cities to see if they have other targets or constraints. One of the things that we talked about as a team, uh, over our tenure financial plan, I think we've done a really good job as an organization identifying that tenure plan, um, and listing out all the items. This would be kind of one of those things, careful what you wish for. But we haven't really done a lot of like year adjustments and moving pieces around. Um, and we want to create a more comfortable environment, um, and some parameters for the city council to kind of, um, have a kind of more robust discussion on these items and see where you want to be targeted on certain financial impacts and investments. And maybe you, it all aligns, uh, but we think that we're, we've created, we haven't created enough of an environment for you to have that discussion without providing some data and some guardrails for that. Um, and then also to create a worksheet, uh, to identify all contracted services and associate the annual costs. That was, I think, something council members here had mentioned. Um, and that's related to, it's one thing to talk about, but we might spend for janitorial services or information technology services. But we only happen to do that probably annually or at most twice a year. But if we can have a report that shows you what we pay along with that service, I think you become more informed and so it's not just an annual budget discussion, but, um, something again that you can use as a kind of an information tool as you look to adopt some of these really important policy documents. And then disconnected with that, with each of these, uh, rather than trying to kind of mess around with this kind of template, what we would do in our quarterly updates is just kind of list, uh, the action and then provide the update there so you can, uh, see what the, what work has been done in the last three months related to each of these action steps. So, I'll pause there, um, on the financial piece.
So, yeah, what's the, so strategy to increase bond rating, what's the target?
Uh, I would say to increase it by one, but I mean, you could say triple A. But in general, I mean, the origin of that is just to increase and to show improvement. So, um, we'd be working with Tammy and Jess at Northland to develop some strategies. Some of them, we've already gotten feedback on through our, uh, past reading calls. But, you know, we, we want to...
We're double A plus now, right?
Uh, I can't recall off the top of my head. We're in that double A, I don't know if we're double A or double A plus.
Didn't we not increase it in the last year? Didn't, there was some feedback and we needed to do something? What was that?
It hasn't gotten up, but like, a couple of the feedback pieces, they were concerned about the status of our general fund reserve. Um, and that was, uh, so we had, we underperformed on building permit revenues, which caused a deficit. And then we created a strategy...
So, that was there until...
It was, yes.
Keep going.
And then, uh, second piece is they wanted a more right, robust, uh, capital improvement planning tool, um, rather than just an Excel spreadsheet. So, Lynn invested in some software, uh, that a lot of organizations use to track capital planning that has areas for pictures and justification and planning year. That's a little bit more, uh, significant than kind of how we had been doing it. So, those are two examples of things that we know about.
And we got the software.
Correct.
Yeah. So, one other question I had, sorry. We have ample time, right? So I have...
I have a really short one.
Looks like we do. Oh, complete local emergency management plan. What's that?
Well, I'll get into the, I'm just, on the financial stuff right now.
Oh, I skipped it, nevermind.
I just have one really small question. So, when we have on that, um, new kind of grid that we're gonna do for the cohorts that you... Um, where's this franchise fees? Can we put fees slash tax collected? Because technically it's a tax.
Sure.
I think that will, I think that's a nice story to tell that you're actually being...
You know what, I don't, nobody refers to it as a franchise tax. I get what you're saying.
I'm just saying, take fees out.
I'm not, I think, you want to refer to franchise fees as a tax.
I want both of those in there, because franchise fees are technically a pass-through tax that's collected.
I get it.
So, I think when we are talking, we are looking at this, if we were to ever show this to someone who is outside of us, who knows exactly what that means, to say that they're collecting that tax and it's going up...
Yeah.
A resident may say, "Oh, a tax."
No, I get it.
Better than a fee.
I get it, and that was the feedback we got from, sorry, for folks as a tax by any other need. But I don't think that franchise fees are traditionally responded or referred to as tax. I just worry that that will cause more confusion if somebody picks this up and doesn't get that.
I don't know if it will, I guess I don't...
Is there a different word you would recommend? I just like having it say franchise fees. Because I think it could cause, like, I think they're gonna think straight tax, like, "Oh, are the taxes, you know, are the utility fees taxed or higher?" I think it's just more clear if it's just franchise fees.
I disagree, but I don't know what everyone else.
I agree with Courtney. I understand what your argument is, um, but I don't, I think it adds confusion to, you know, it's franchise fee, that's when it's going into the city. I don't think that adding tax is going to make it less confusing. It's just gonna muddy the waters of, if they were to Google franchise fee, which is what most people will do when they see it and they don't know what it is.
And I think it's the commentary where it would add, if we're presenting this to somebody saying franchise fees, so this is essentially the taxes that are added, you know? I think it's something that we would say, but I, I just worry that it's confusing. Does anybody else know what I'm...
Okay. So, having a word of this one, this is your suggestion.
Yeah.
Steve, yeah, I get why you want to do that. It's in your face without having to research it. So, I guess they kind of agree. As I look at that fees tax, I associate it as being a tax, but I see it that way. But I'm not, I'm, that's not a huge deal, but I'm fine with that.
Laura, thoughts?
Um, I'm fine with, actually, either way, but I just can't think of a better word than franchise fee. So, my first choice would be franchise fee, but...
All right, there you go, all right.
So, leave it.
Take it out.
Yeah, all right. Uh, and then, uh, moving on to initiative two, uh, improved operations, satisfied employees, capacity to meet core service demands and well-managed operations. The only one that, uh, we're still, is still outstanding, um, and that we've connected with Andrew on us to create a comprehensive asset management plan. Uh, so really kind of get, digging into kind of the maintenance, uh, of our equipment, vehicles and facilities. Um, the, so that's our existing, our initiatives is develop strategic initiatives of public safety to include emergency preparedness, law enforcement needs and service priorities, along with a review of staffing and compensation programs for the fire department. So, this one's a little bit longer. Uh, so, collaborate on a refreshed public, on refreshed public safety goals and annual work plan. Um, and thought behind this is, um, instead of kind of being diagnosing the service provider, let's talk about, you know, we have that, I think you saw that earlier in the year, that four or five-page work plan. That's probably a template that's been refreshed and re-grifted from that same script, probably for at least twenty years. And I think there's an opportunity to, uh, facilitate a conversation with the city council on, you know, what does successful law enforcement and fire services mean, uh, to the city council and the community? And if we can identify what those priorities are, then we can establish some, uh, measurements and measure whether or not we're successful. And then if we're short in those areas, then we could maybe diagnose, uh, into like what strategies we might need to employ to meet that priority. And so, that's, we're, we're proposing to start on, um, law enforcement, fire service. To develop a five-year compensation plan for the fire department. So, we spent a lot of time on full-time employees, um, and so we wanted to kind of mirror that for the fire department. And so, Chief Trimble and Lynn would be working on a pay and benefits plan, uh, for the fire department. One of the other pieces that we've been working on for a couple of years now is complete, a local emergency management plan. And this makes me think of, uh, Council Member Pasco, when she first started asking for like the city's emergency management plan, which is, uh, it's in digital form, but it's like two thick binders, uh, worth of material. And so, our goal, and Chief Trimble and Deputy Chief Walsh and I and team have been working on what I'd call kind of an executive summary of that, that is both useful, here, useful to our team, but also, uh, the council and the community. So, we've kind of designated, uh, areas until, like, we're hoping to keep like one to three pages per event, but, you know, a weather event, active shooter event, flood event, um, a significant infrastructure failure event, and have designated roles and responsibilities from, uh, the council and media to establishing a kind of a chain of command. But you could look at it and it's a real, I would call almost like a resident slash kind of team users guide to like emergency managed, emergency services. So, you can kind of see, okay, they, you know, they know how we're doing it. And I think if people can kind of see how you're implementing it, there is an establishment of trust in that people are looking out. And so, we've started doing some of that already where we have an emergency, uh, management team. And so, uh, when we had the tornado or supposed tornado kind of impact coming last week, Cali sent out a text to that team and we started exchanging information. But part of that, uh, plan would be then like, "Well, what happens if cell service goes out? What's our backup?" And so, just, uh, memorializing some of that into a, a quick reference guide, if you will.
And this would be specific to Carver, the city, not just... Because right now, our emergency management plan, you told me, is the county's.
Correct.
Okay.
And that's the goal, is to make it city of Carver-centric. And then, the, the second piece to that is, uh, where Chief Trimble and our team would, along with the council, I think we, we would include you as a tabletop exercise where we go through kind of a, a mock. I was gonna say mock disaster, but I won't. Mock emergency of that. But, uh, like, one of the...
Pretend.
Pretend, pretend.
It can be mock, I don't know.
But, uh, and, uh, Cali had a great idea of maybe just doing like, if there is some type of, uh, emergency at CBO days and how that would be coordinated and communicated and kind of a hall, all the levers and gears would work. Uh, but over to do that, we want to have our plan in place to see like, everyone would know their function and role. And when we hit that button, then we can see, you know, where we succeeded and where we failed and what we need to do to improve our system. And then, uh, finally, review plan year justifications for the full-time, uh, fire chief's position. That's, you know, at the time when that was included in the tenure plan, it was kind of like that outlier, like, "Yeah, well, I know one day we'll need it." Uh, and so, this is a, kind of a significant piece where we're gonna say, "Well, okay." Not just by population, but let's look at service calls, hours worked for our command staff, what are their justifications? Uh, can we measure and what's our threshold for investing into that position so that the city council has all that data to consume and consider when making a final decision on plan and budget?
So, the tabletop, I mean, can we kind of consider this like the Cliff Notes from, or... Because we have the Carver County one, and that is our technical emergency management. What we follow, right? Our standards, our guidelines?
A lot of cities have their own. Uh, Carver County's got a bigger overall one, but a lot of cities have their own. You know, some cities model the county one, but ours would be a little bit different than that one.
Right, I realize it would be specific to our city, but I mean, what are we using now? Are we just using Carver County?
Correct.
Okay, so, this will be a much shortened question?
Yeah, I would say like loosely, like, uh, I'll give you an example. So, we are, I think, benefited by having... So we are, I think, benefited by having, you know, all the experience at the fire department, Paul Schultz's experience, et cetera. But if we had a, if that whole team went on vacation in a week and there was a flood the following week, what is Andrew gonna look at to know? And so a lot of that stuff is internal and is memory. And so this is the Cliff Notes version for the 90s generation of what we do with that emergency plan, because frankly, those two binders, other than when I first got them, I haven't looked at it. It's just so overwhelming and a lot of it is inapplicable. So we're pulling those parts. We're fortunate that Deputy Chief Walsh was with emergency management when their plan was updated, so he can pull out the things within that plan that are unique to Carver that we can have incorporated. But in a bind, if we have new people on a team in a certain situation, you can look at that and at least have a sense of roles, responsibilities, what things need to be considered.
So then would you go deeper into the Carver counties as it went on? Or is this gonna be kind of standalone?
Standalone.
Okay.
Okay. So for example, for like a flood event, it'll, it'll denote, you know, when we shut the gates at the river, when Riverside Park closes, at least until we get the certified levy, when we build the temporary levy at Main Street and Third Street, and what those elevations are, contracts or contacts for Mueller's and other contractors where we can get supplies and material, like sand and gravel materials, et cetera.
Hey, Brendan, a couple of weeks ago, I asked about communication plans. So we have a plane crash, we have a shooting, the media reaches out to you, or they reach out to the mayor and they don't catch you. So they go down the list. How we handle that, what to say, not to say. Were you gonna cover that in your emergency training? Is that been thought about?
Yeah. So we have a, so right now, under like, it is a very kind of loose template, but right now, the communication requests come to the city manager. We're getting information from the team as far as like talking points, data. The mayor serves as the kind of the, the media outlet to deliver that. The acting mayor is kind of second. If neither of those two positions are available, it's opened up to like the council or, you know, if it's like.
Because if they call me, I'm gonna say, talk to Laura.
You know, and so.
They're gonna call me after Courtney, so I'm just gonna put some names in a hat of you three and whoever gets it.
You know, one of the new things that we have done is.
Watch the news.
That we haven't had that is integrated into this plan is, you know, if I'm unavailable, you know, out of state or what have you, we have an acting city manager, which is the finance director. So we have, we're creating these like backups to situations. And it really, when it comes down to like the media stuff, you know, there'd be some probably high level talking points for elected officials, but like the technical and tactical stuff, we rely on the fire chief or the sheriff's office or the public services director.
Now turn the microphone over to.
Correct.
I'm not worried about two o'clock in the afternoon. I'm worried about seven o'clock at a weekend. And the media is just gonna go through a list. Because I was in a seminar and we talked about this, and some mistakes that cities have made in responses to that.
And that's why we want to get that, that kind of Cliff Notes guide out to you, because ultimately, it's your guide. I mean, you, you could choose to, to talk to the media if you wish, but part of it is to make sure that we have all the same talking points and our consistent messaging and timing, so that we don't put the folks that are out in the field in a position where they're having to do more than what we're asking them and trying to verify information that's been said at different points in time. So again, you know, it's just the plan on paper, and so that's where that, maybe that exercise that Chief Trimble was talking about, you know, puts us in that position where we have somebody from newspaper X, Y, Z call Kayla and Courtney, you know? And so like, what's the response to this? We can test out how our system works. Any other questions and comments on this? Good discussions.
So for me, my only thought on this one is the developed, second kind of bullet, develop the fire compensation plan for the fire department. I would love to see that moved up so that it happens a little bit earlier, so that hopefully, so that potentially it could have a budget year 2026 impact. But I also get that if we did all of these as soon as we wanted to, where we're ready, that you guys would have a really busy summer. So if that's, if we can't get that done any earlier, I certainly understand, but if there's.
Yep.
Any freeing up to get stuff done any earlier, that's one that I would prioritize to get done sooner rather than later.
I hear that and I would typically agree with that. It really gives us, if you think about it, by the time we get our first budget to you in August, that really gives us like two to three months to get that work done. And I just don't think that's enough time to do the comprehensive review that you deserve and that this topic deserves. So that's why we said for the spring, because we just didn't think the 25 budget wasn't reality. And I think there are things, things in place and how we're looking at compensation and retirement paid that we're not deficient in. This is just a matter of coordinating a plan for the council to inform their decision-making process. But I wouldn't say we're deficient in the areas. Again, that's just my own bias, but you've increased the retirement pay by at least double. I think we're at 2,500, like three years ago, and we're at 5,200 right now. We converted from the hourly pay for everybody to, and we got rid of the stipend pay to like, we have hourly pay for a regular firefighter, then it moves up on the line for officer pay up to fire chiefs. So I think we're, we're not deficient in that area, but it's a matter of setting up an expectation and a trajectory that everyone can kind of follow along. And again, this is just my editorial opinion.
Yes.
If Cali or the council feels differently, and if you said, hey, nope, we want that done, then we'll get it done.
Yeah. You just sent out that email not long ago with the comparisons for the cities. And for right now, I, like you said, I don't think that we're deficient. And we look at our comparison cities for the fire and rescue right now. I think, yes, in a beautiful ideal world, I, yes, we could look for it, but I think, being that I felt pretty comfortable with where that was at for right now, spring of 2026, I think is a good working time for it.
I just want to be clear, I didn't think I used the word deficient. I don't think.
No, you did it.
But I, if we're able to do this, this feels like a group that I, if we're able to reprioritize it, I would love to see that. I certainly get and knew that you put that in there for a reason, and that there are other priorities and other just events and processes that are taking place that come in just a little bit before that, but.
Can it be annoying?
Yes.
I just, it'd be helpful. We need, I'd need clear direction, either like, like the council says, like, summer of '25 or spring of '26.
No, but it's not annoying.
Yeah.
I say spring of 2026.
I agree, spring 2026. We can just bring 2026. I just think our firefighters should be a little bit more prioritized.
Well, didn't we, does this impact having a full-time chief?
No.
Oh, okay. Because we did talk about that.
That's the last one.
Yeah. If it doesn't impact that, I'm fine with 2026.
Moving on to responsive development. So this expanded commercial industrial tax base, a greater housing variety and a vibrant community. You can see our statistics there for jobs, housing units, retail services and placemaking, the associated action steps that develop a marketing, a market, marketing, it should say, plan for industrial development. So that'll be something that we'd be trying to budget for, for 2026, and the implementation would end up being in the summer of '26. As you know, the planning commission has been working on the zoning code for quite some time. Initiatives amendment, develop a thoughtful and informative, inclusive, and community-centered approach to the 2050 comprehensive plan process, and review commission structure and consider modifications. So this is one where Aaron's gonna star. So conduct a joint session of the city council and planning commission to generate ideas and strategies for engagement connected with the 2050 comprehensive plan. Develop a budget for comprehensive plan engagement activities for the 2026 budget. Engage the planning commission in a review of the existing park concept for the landing. Planning commission to develop plan recommendations, and then pursue an additional pedestrian crossing for the south side or the summer field neighborhood of the community. One of the things too, I, I put this together in the last minute, but I was kind of inspired a little bit by the council discussion, because one of the things, at least this is an editorial on my observation is, and I'll take ownership of it. I think I've done, as far as like leading communications, a poor job of like leading the community on what this park space splash pad is. And just like anything, if you don't do a good enough job of kind of saying what it is and what the rules are, other people provide the narrative and definition. And so at least when I think about this, it's an effort and it's, I think park dedication is critical here, because we have all these other needs that you are immensely aware of, but we have park dedication dollars to use after we get through Creekside Park. And so like, what are we gonna do with those? And I think Aaron provided a compelling story of like the Miriam Junction trail. And so really, we're trying to create a new gathering space in the heart of the Carver historic district. All the things, you know, that, that could provide that destination, you know, visitors, residents alike, to do all those things that I think, at least when I think of like a charming historic downtown, all those are opportunities that people look for. I think when we talk about the downtown, people think about this. And this is where we failed, or this is where I failed. It's not this. This is, because I've heard splash pad more than all the other things on that first page. I would offer that this is what we're talking about, or this is the intent. And through work of Aaron, the planning commission, the council, the community, we can take kind of this, like, I would call it like a vision board and make it into something that I think more represents what the original intent was. But splash pad, because I think that's an interesting topic, kind of like anchored that conversation and to the point where I almost feel like, because I almost feel kind of like uneasy talking about it in public, because I don't know where people are gonna land on it. But it just kind of came to me, by the way. But.
Let's let it go.
If you think about, if you think about all the things on this first page, and you didn't have any like vision of like what it is in pictures, I think you'd have a hard time finding a lot of people that would say like, well, I don't want any of those things to happen. Now, what that looks like and what the details of that are, I think are probably yet to be determined, but I think there definitely is a space to provide that, because from the day I started till today, like, the historic downtown has been like the heartbeat of, and what people say they admire and how they fell in love with this community. And we have $20 million worth of investment and probably another 12 to 15 million dollars worth of investment with the Miriam Junction and the levy certification. You know, how are we gonna maximize that? You know, $35 million worth of public investment with virtually none of that money coming locally. So how are we gonna leverage that? So I just wanted to, to say that, because I think it's, and share that, I guess, because I think it's important that when we're talking about the landing, that, that maybe it's just me, that somehow that narrative can be changed. And it's complicated, because it's a large project, it's always gonna be complicated. And so timing is always important, communication is always important, but I think ultimately expectations are important, that we share what the expectations are, and we get communication back from the community related to expectations, so.
I think that too, we're at a point where we've had a cooling off period since we started talking about splash pad, and we've had new residents move in, so it's not necessarily a bad time to do some new messaging on what that's gonna look like.
And by that, you mean next summer. It's not a bad time.
Yeah. I want to make sure that we get the space study.
Yeah. Oh, absolutely.
Squared away.
Because these are not too parallel.
No.
Things. We need to, I think that that should be the priority. But yeah.
I, I agree. We talked about that last meeting, but I'm just saying that overall, I think we're at a point where when we need to start messaging it again, we can redefine that message and not run into a ton of problems.
You're wrong on that. But yes, I did, basically, I agree with you.
So I, yes, the messaging, the first photo you showed with the kids brightly colored, you know, primary colors, that is what people have in their head, and people, I mean, majority of the people that I've talked to do not want that down here. And they don't not want the splash pad. They want a splash pad. They want it somewhere. They just don't want it down here. I tend to agree, if that is the image that you're having in your head, that it's not the right spot. I think that the messaging of the other pictures you have showed are, if not on target, close on target, say this is more of a vision of what this can be rather than, but what it has seemed to been. I don't know. Where it landed with everyone at the landing?
Fun to do.
I know, isn't that scary?
After the cooling off.
We got one change. We can reference, you know, with, with the timing of projects we focus on, you know, given it a year. It's also cooling off period.
Oh, my God, sorry. So what I'm wondering though, is because there is, I mean, when I am down here, I live down here, obviously, someone brings it up to me.
Do you?
At least.
Did you?
Yes. I know, but they, I mean, once a week is, I mean, for sure, if not more than that, somebody asked me about it. So when we're looking at, is it the 2026 that we're going to, to start rebranding it?
Well, that's what this says, is that in the summer of '26, that Aaron would start up process. But again, that's, it's up to the council where you want that to be.
I think it should be sooner than that, for exactly the reason you said. I think.
It gets continuous.
We need to change the perception around it. Don't have to do a lot, but I think you start now.
I disagree really strongly on that.
Do you?
Yeah. I think, so again, this public services space study, I think we need to get that figured out. It won't allow us to avoid this, but I don't want the narrative to be, council wants a splash pad downtown, that's why they're tearing down that building. So I, you know, you're right, like, I don't know why, but this has become a hot button issue. And 100% the pictures of the primary colors and the neon colors splash pad that's plucked directly out of Wisconsin Dells and thrown into downtown Carver is what folks have in their minds. How do I know this? Because somebody was leafleting before the parade last year with maybe exactly the pictures that you used, Brent. But it's this ugly, not period appropriate, not historically appropriate. And I just, again, you know, water feature or not, we need to do something down there, but I think our primary focus for right now needs to be space study and what that means and what that looks like before we start talking about the next use of what's gonna go in there. Because it's gonna be nothing if we don't figure out what the space solution is.
I would see rebranding it now. And you know, that's, I'm not talking about that a large effort, but to me, I think that might be perceived as the city dialing this back a little bit. And I worry about the wrong perception of what that park is going to be festering for a year. And I don't know, you know, I get your point that someone might worry about that building, but that's one small little city asset in the large scope of what we need to do. That's one little piece of it, so. I, I worry about letting it sit as it is for now, because I really like the landing. I really like people thinking about that gateway into Carver. And I, I think it will be perceived as the city having listened, dialing it back, considering what this is gonna be for the next year. And we still focus on the, on the space study, but that's my opinion.
I agree. I think that we, I don't think we have to do a huge marketing push that this is, you know, and it's splashed everywhere. But I really don't think it has to be this huge marketing push, but I think, as Erin explained to you, I think it does show the city, we have listened, although this maybe wasn't our full intent to begin with, I think it shows that yes, we have, we have heard you and this is actually what is planned to be down there. I'm not saying that we, again, everything, you know, we, it goes all over Facebook and it's, you know, months and months of newsletters from you, but the fact it's been rebranded, we've heard you, it may not have been the intent, but this is more along the lines of what that is supposed to be. And it is one of the small buildings that we do have down here. And that, that study is a larger, a big larger scope.
100%, but the bar crowd that's been rattling our cages on this isn't gonna be diving into the space study. I just, I feel really strongly that we should wait at least until next year before we start talking about that so that we can figure out the space study.
I agree with the mayor on this. I think that it's, there's a lot of perception reasons and another one that may come up is this idea of like, we're proposing to spend all of this money and all of this money. And I know that we have two separate funds, right? We've got general funds and we've got park dedication funds, but most residents don't know that or understand that. And so they just see lots and lots of dollars going out the door. And if we do them, if we are working on both of them at the same time, that perception gets even larger as well.
But that perception has lasted since I was the staff. They don't understand park dedication and it doesn't, and.
And I'm not saying they will, I'm just saying it's another way we can.
But no matter what project that we do that we use park dedication on, you and we all here, I can't believe you're studying my tax dollars on this because it just, you can say it, you can explain it, the general public, because they don't work with us on a daily basis, don't understand what that is. So to me, whether you put them together at the same time, or you plop them out separately to the public, it will be, you will still get the same responses and the same questions back of why we're spending tax dollars when it's actually park dedication.
Yeah, I think for me, and maybe this is like Kayla's saying in a little bit of a different way, but it's kind of like choosing battles, right? And it feels like, let's focus on the space study now and then we can pivot and move on to that. There's nothing that's gonna happen there this year while they're working on that project. We're not ready to, to move on that anyways. And I think that the space study and everything that's accompanying that is gonna take up staff's time enough. And then hopefully it would work in a way that next summer, we can work and start focusing on that. You're right, folks don't know and folks don't want to learn. I went a couple rounds of Sunday today on Facebook about water bills, saying, let's sit down, let's talk. No, I just wanna, just wanna give you feedback, which is fine.
That's fine.
But I just, I really think that we should separate out these two, or do you have any thoughts?
I do, and this is one of those things, if you would've asked me a month ago, I would've been more aligned with Erin and Christie, cause I was like, come on, let's like, you know, let's get this going, let's start this, you know, the landing. But actually, I have a question and then I'll finish. Is, do we have a picture of what we looked at from our work or our strategic planning?
Erin's picture.
Yeah.
The rendering.
Of the building?
No, of a, a concept.
Yeah, those are all on the website.
I was just poking around at the, you know. So I, what I thought, but I would, if you had, someone can pull one up. Cause yeah, there's stuff still out there from 2020, but if anything, I feel like I could respond to something and say, well, that's five years ago, you know.
Then maybe we should pull it off, it's not gonna be relevant.
I think some of it's just buried.
Or no of it's relevant.
Yeah.
Go to the parks master plan.
So it's, it's, you really would have to know where to find it. But my point was, at first time.
It says downtown splash pad.
I think, I think we all agree that.
At least that.
Yeah. I also know to be like, you know what, yeah, that was five years ago and we were not gonna spend a ton of money getting a rendering. I mean, look at the, it's not even the coffee shop, Donna's. But I have a different perspective now, and so I'm more aligned with what the mayor and council member Pasco was saying, because of the two different ways that it's paid for, the two different funding sources, I, I just think it keeps things more simple to say, to just focus on the space study. And then when the timing's better, then to start messaging, branding, the landing.
Except for changing it to say the landing instead of downtown splash pad.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with that.
Yeah, but okay, so then we're here with this, with this visual, right? And we've already kind of talked that maybe this visual isn't even it. Is this where we put up the other pictures then? We don't have to send it out, Brent's landing, so that if someone does come here, it doesn't look like, yep, this is it, this is exactly what we're doing.
Yeah, and let's, I'm okay with maybe not Brent's pictures. Well, it's either Brent's pictures or Karen's pictures from the strategic planning session, but I just, whatever we put up, we should put up something like this is just a rendering decision, you know?
I think Erin and I could work together with Brenda on kind of a website refresh and at least like take the, the titles off. And I, I would say we'd probably take these renderings off and just talk about like what the vision is and some high level stuff that we could do immediately.
We can make it a feedback page too, where they can add comments on it.
Well, let's change the city vernacular to the landing here and everywhere else. Let's at least do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, even if all we do is retitle that landing page to the landing. Yeah, and we'll maybe make it a separate page off the park master plan page.
Yeah, cause it has to be called something, right?
Yeah, splash pad is not.
I'd also like to incorporate that language that you just showed us, because when they go to that page, you know, a picture is one thing, but I think, you know, you kind of encapsulated what we intended to be. So I'd like to see that language there too, or something like that.
I gotta do.
Okay, that'll make me happy, then I can, I can agree with you.
Was that a compromise?
Yes.
No, I just, I feel really strongly, I think that this is, it's funny, I've heard that splash pads are flashpoints for communities and I still don't get why it's such a, like you feel so strongly one way or the other on them. But I just wanna make it really clear that we've got some work to do before that ever becomes a reality.
All right, stable infrastructure systems, reliable infrastructure system.
Well, it's just the change of pace from the landing to stable infrastructure.
Look at us. Systems aligned with growth plan, expanded park system. I realize now that I think I put the, the landing in both spots, so I'll clean that up. Service disruption, retrofitting, park amenities, trail connections, you can see kind of where we're at with those items. Develop park and trail improvement program, we have that completed. Develop our redundancy plan for key infrastructure. One of the things I just noticed in working with Andrew for a month, we're really fortunate to have him in the spot that we do, cause I think he's, he along with Jordan and Paul are gonna really do a great job of, of kind of lean into that, so. But that is a lot of work, we have a lot of gears and pumps and other things that those things do. So it'll be, you know, showing off my mechanical.
Other things that those things do.
Showing off my mechanical vacuum there.
Lots of stuff and things.
Stuff about the parts. But I'll clean this up, this amendment piece. We didn't have anything new related to targets and strategic initiatives other than those pieces. In looking at this, I don't know if the council has a preference on responsive development, I'm, my preference just by looking at it is to move the landing stuff out of responsive development and put it into stable infrastructure systems, since we have an expanded park system and amenities. Is that acceptable for the council? And then finally focus communications, so inform the community and engage the community and satisfy the community. So we deleted all that kind of piece about kind of establishing a communication plan and hitting certain numbers for participation in favor of this new amendment, so reviewing city apps and develop a budget for implementation in 2026. Brenda Good would take the lead on that. Develop a strategy and needs assessment for video communications content. Funny, funny enough, I talked to both Matt and Lori from Chaska and Chan Hassan at this conference, had to drive a couple hours to connect with them, but they've got some pretty cool things that they've been doing, I don't know if I mentioned this at their last meeting, but Chaska did a park dedication video that kind of got up at some of the things that the council was just talking about. Chan Hassan has done some pretty cool video on kind of construction updates with some software that's pretty accessible. And then just review and study software applications and training that control our own communication resources. I think a lot of the stuff, our bigger stuff that we've done, that's been through Bolton and me, but frankly, and this is in a slight to their communications team, but I just think we have a better flavor of what the messaging needs to be and rather than going through like, you know, a dozen drafts of a communication piece. If we spend some time getting the appropriate software and resources, I think a lot of that stuff we can do in-house. Eventually, we'll probably need a, a specialist, but the feedback after, I went to a session on communications and kind of what communities are using and, you know, it's, it's expensive to do quality stuff. And so a lot of the feedback that I, and the experience that I took was that if you're gonna do it, you gotta really hire a full-time person that has like those capabilities, cause you, you probably don't need a, a communications intern that can do a Facebook post and some other stuff, because that's, we have the people that can do that already, so. So this is the action plan, so our goal here tonight was to present the action plan along with the targets. Other than kind of the repositioning, the, the landing stuff and the action items specific to the website updates, I didn't hear any amendments or deletions, but again, opening the floor up for changes or things that you thought are missing from our goal setting the strategic planning session that you think need to be added. And again, you'll have an opportunity to look at this at your next meeting, you see this is dated for May 19th, so it'll be a final adoption at your regular meeting on the 19th. So if you do think of anything before, when you wanna discuss at that regular meeting, you'll have the opportunity to do so.
I have one question, more of a clarifying question on page three of six, it talks about increasing jobs. Do we have, it's a percentage?
Three of six?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, number three, sorry.
Yep, page four of six.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, do we have like a, we're at right now?
Erin Smith is tracking that, so I think, I think 10% is our latest number.
Yeah. A 10% increase from, but where do we start?
From 2023.
No, what is the number of jobs?
Oh.
I don't know, I'll talk on my own.
Okay. I've never done one, so. And you mean for like a business, you don't just mean the city, you mean like a business here?
Yeah, correct, we're not counting city employees.
Okay.
Any other thoughts, comments?
I have one about that, so there's, that one is always, it's sort of hit me a little bit strange for that, the job, the number of job percentages that we use, because the city gets, I mean, we are, we're doing it now, but the city is bigger, are we really gonna be tracking jobs?
You know, like how many people are at Fleet Farm and how many people are gonna be at the McDonald's, it's coming someday, or whatever it might be.
The Met Council does it for us.
Okay.
So it's just new businesses that have come in, part of the conversation is figuring out how many new employees we're bringing in. So it's not, we're not tracking like, has like you fired anyone or hired anyone?
Okay.
Cause to me, it's kind of, it's a little bit arbitrary. If everyone else thinks they should stay in here, that is absolutely fine. It just, to me, it just seems a little bit arbitrary to be, you know, we have six new jobs in town, okay, that's, neither here nor there to me.
I think it's a good metric to keep track of, like, we, the city of Carver, aren't necessarily very directly like affecting change in this area besides having an awesome community development team, welcoming all kinds of commercial and industrial development, but I, I don't know, I like seeing it, I like it for the update factor.
The, I can share that the origin of it was to be a metric, you know, like measure expanded commercial and industrial tax base rather than putting numbers in for those, like square footage, that jobs is the outcome of adding those spaces, but again, that's just where we started.
It's helpful to know that it comes from Met Council, because two, I, I don't want someone to think that I consider like city of Carver responsible, or like, you know, that we can't, you know, we don't have a direct impact on, you know, how many jobs, it's not.
But it does say for one of our initiatives is to increase the number of jobs. So I don't think of the terrible numbers of, no, I'm just wondering, is it too arbitrary now that we don't really need it in this plan? And I would say we do impact the amount of jobs that come.
Yeah.
Like, is development easy? Do we have programs to help businesses come into the community? Like that, I think is a good metric for economic development.
Okay.
To figure out how many additional businesses we've brought in. But if you don't want it on here, it's fine, but we'll probably continue to.
I just wanna voice, be in that spot where like, it's yours, this city's fault then we haven't added more jobs.
Right, and so, yeah, for me, when it says like a year, it's like 20.
Continue to steadily increase, but then that's not a goal, it's not very measurable, so.
I mean, cause then, so if we say like increase by 20%, and this is our, our target and we don't make it, so then now we look and say, well, we didn't make our targets on this, but it's, again, it's kind of, we do and don't have anything to do with whether this target gets met or not. So I don't know if I, you know, I misspoke, Erin and her team do all the work, they're the reason why those jobs come in.
Right.
I just think it's good to look at and, you know, if we, if we miss our goal, like there's not gonna be a stoning down in the landing. It's, the idea is to have a goal so that we can see where the needle is and measure it. We miss it, we miss it, but then we knew what we were able to accomplish.
I'm comfortable with keeping it in here, thinking of it that way too, where it's like, if it ends, you know, of any of who miss it, it's what were the lessons learned? What things were out of our control?
And some of these were stretch goals by intention.
I think it's really important to have pressure on Erin to get us to 20%.
I gotta show up here.
Yeah, at least this isn't, this isn't something that, I'm gonna fight either way out, I just wanted to ask the rest of the council if it was worth having it in here.
I think it's important, I think the goal is important, I think we do have an impact on it because if we weren't doing, if you weren't doing the great work you're doing, we'd have fewer jobs, so let's have the goal here.
Okay.
Any other comments, thoughts, feedback? All right. Do you need anything else from us?
No, thank you.
Uh, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by councilman Pershaw?
I'll second.
Box got that. A motion paper?
Yeah.
A posting sign? Should pass those, thank you.
It's not up until we end early.
Yeah, I could probably ask you what year this shirt is from. So. Ran it together, I feel like a Sunday morning.
Isn't it on the sleeve, they didn't put a year on there anymore?
By the sponsors.
I was gonna, I'll look at the, yeah, uh, nothing on the back. Nothing on the sleeve, no dates on the sleeve.
It was the, it was the sponsors.
Uh, dental, Chaska Dental, Casey's General, Snap Fitness, St. Francis Rehabilitation Services.
No idea.
No, I know it's my turn, she lived on Sutton Ridge, she was Karen Johnson.